Order, order.
Let me see anything?
Okay. Sorry for starting a little late. The time is now 7:05 PM and I'll call this town council meeting to order. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's town council meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. Tonight, we do not have any condolences for our veterans, but I'd please like to ask everyone for a brief moment of silence for all of our past veterans, their families, and friends. Thank you. Okay, so, starting off, we will begin with the approval of minutes from the previous meetings for our June 3 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilor Strickles, for seconding that. And do we have any discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, announcements for the presidents. I do, from the president, I do have a few here. Of course, this weekend, we do have our special election for the override vote. In-person, early absentee voting is now and currently still available at the town clerk's office. You can do so in person tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The office is closed on Thursday in recognition of Juneteenth. Friday, the office is open from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The special election will be held Saturday from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the middle school.
Excuse me, could I just add that voting has to stop at 12:00 on Friday?
Oh, thank you.
They'll be open till 1:00, but it has to close at 12:00. Voting stop at 12:00.
Okay. Thank you so much, sorry about that. So that, again, so Friday, that's going to be 8:00 AM to noon. And then the special election is Saturday from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the middle school. Just a brief comment on that, just from me personally. Regardless of the outcome of Saturday's consequential election, the residents of Bridgewater have mine and the council's full commitment to serving as responsible stewards of our tax dollars and town resources. Together with my fellow councilors, we will continue working towards fiscal practices that support a thriving, sustainable community, one that delivers the services all of our residents deserve. This will require disciplined budgeting and a thoughtful, transparent approach to how we allocate resources to not only our schools, but our emergency services and across all town departments. In the days ahead, I hope that we can move forward, not as opponents in a debate, but as neighbors united by a shared goal. Also, on Saturday is our Third Annual First Responders' Day, brought to you by the Fire for Effect Foundation. That will be from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So go ahead and get out there and vote and come by Town River Landing for what will be a great event, as we recognize our local heroes, with a number of demonstrations. There will be food trucks, entertainment by BTV's own Jeff Fowler, beverages from Black Hat Brew Works, and sober sips as well. And that's all I have for announcements. We do have some proclamations tonight. So we will be recognizing the Bridgewater Rainham Robotics Team, TJ Squared, who is back there in attendance, and I will go ahead and read the proclamation into the record here. Debbie, should we have them come up first and then read it in? So guys, please all come up, come up front and we'll read it into the record honoring you all. Okay, so proclamation on behalf of the Bridgewater Town Council. Whereas the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School Robotics Team, TJ Squared Team 88, has consistently demonstrated excellence in engineering, innovation, and teamwork as part of the internationally recognized first robotics program. And whereas in the 2025 season, TJ Squared achieved notable success across multiple competitive events, including finalist placements at the University of Rhode Island and Worcester Polytechnic Institute District Events, a Team Spirit Award at WPI, an advancement to both the New England District Championship and the First World Championship in Houston, Texas. And whereas on May 31, 2025, TJ Squared competed in the Massachusetts State Championship in North Andover, entering as captains of Alliance II, and they emerged as state champions after commanding playoff performance. And whereas the members, mentors, and coaches of Team 88 have brought honor to Bridgewater through their technical expertise, leadership, and commitment to excellence, and serve as role models for youth in our community interested in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And whereas the Bridgewater Town Council recognizes the tireless dedication, countless hours, and collaborative spirit that contributed to this championship season. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council does hereby congratulate and commend TJ Squared Team 88 for their historic victory as the 2025 Massachusetts State Robotics Champions, and expresses its profound appreciation for their contributions to the Bridgewater community and to the advancement of STEM education. In witness thereof, we have heretofore set unto our hands and cause the seal of the Town of Bridgewater to be affixed on the 17th day of June 2025. Congratulations.
Hold it, present it to him and then we'll, you know, take the picture. I don't have a camera. Who's got a camera to take a picture?
I really have.
Would like to receive that on behalf of the team.
Someone got my picture?
Is there a picture of everybody? Does somebody want to be responsible taking a photo? What do you guys want to stand at?
Up here.
Up here?
Yeah, we stand up here.
While you guys come over here, we'll face this way for the rest of the town council.
Or have them stand behind the, behind the cameras.
That might work too. Have them, yeah, you can have them stand behind if you want.
Back here?
Yeah.
Watch the forward.
Sit down so you can be in the picture.
Make sure you can see that and that. All right.
Good. All right.
Thank you, guys. And that was the first state championship, if I understand correctly. Defend it next year. Okay. Great job, everyone. Next up, we have another proclamation. Recognizing firefighter paramedic James Jimmy Beatty. I'm going to read the proclamation to the record. I do not believe Mr. Beatty is here tonight, so we will honor him here and read this in. Whereas James Jimmy Beatty will retire on July 4, 2025, from his position as firefighter paramedic with the Town of Bridgewater, concluding a distinguished and successful career in municipal service. And whereas in the year 2000, firefighter paramedic Beatty was named firefighter of the year in recognition of his exceptional performance and dedication. And whereas in December 2023, firefighter paramedic Beatty received a letter of accommodation for his heroic efforts in resuscitating a young girl in critical condition, helping to save her life shortly after she had returned home from an extended hospital stay. And whereas firefighter paramedic Beatty has long served as an informal leader within his duty group, earning the respect and trust of his colleagues who frequently seek his guidance and advice. And whereas his upbeat personality and contagious positive attitude have significantly contributed to high morale among his peers. And whereas as a senior firefighter, he has mentored numerous members of the department, sharing his expertise in fostering growth and professionalism throughout the ranks. And whereas upon his retirement, firefighter paramedic Beatty will be deeply missed by his colleagues and the Bridgewater community, yet he now looks forward to enjoying a well-earned retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Bridgewater formally recognizes and extends its deepest gratitude to firefighter paramedic James Jimmy Beatty for his years of dedicated service, bravery, mentorship, and commitment to the community. In witness thereof, we have heretofore set unto our hands and cause the seal of the Town of Bridgewater to be affixed to the 17th day of June 2025. Okay. We have one more proclamation, which is not on our agenda. The town council would like to recognize and extend our gratitude towards Town Manager Robinson. I will read our proclamation into the record. Whereas Ms. Blythe Robinson has served the Town of Bridgewater with exceptional dedication, diligence, and professionalism in her role as interim town manager. And whereas during her tenure, she has provided steady leadership, clear communication, and a strong work ethic during a significant period of transition for the town. And whereas her presence has brought consistency to the daily operations of municipal government, and her collaborative spirit has supported and enhanced the work of the town council and staff. And whereas the Bridgewater Town Council wishes to recognize and commend her tireless efforts, thoughtful guidance, and unwavering commitment to public service. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Bridgewater Town Council hereby expresses its heartfelt gratitude to Ms. Blythe Robinson for her outstanding service to the Town of Bridgewater, and extends best wishes for continued success in all her future personal and professional endeavors. In witness thereof, the Bridgewater Town Council sets its hand and seal the 17th day of June 2025. All right. Well, now we will move on to citizen open forum. Due to Massachusetts openly, open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone would, at this time, like to come up and speak for three minutes? Please keep your comments and queries to three minutes, and I will give you a little wave if we kind of get close to time here. So would anyone like to come up and speak?
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I don't have much, and I just have questions on the TIF. I know it's going to be discussed, and you got ad hoc that you're going to be discussing, but I'm always concerned, is it going to just be for that area that you're looking for? What's stopping other developers? My concern is other developers are going to seek that, why, if they have it in that area, why can't we get it zoned in this area? So I want to know what stops that from happening. I just, I still think it's a tough time to be offering that. I know it doesn't cost the town anything, but it does cost the town because you don't get the taxes right away. So I have concerns about that. I know you're going to discuss the town clerk's salary. I have no idea what she makes now, so maybe that will be discussed when you discuss the increase. So we have an appreciation of what the grades are. I have no idea what the grades are, so hopefully that will be addressed. And the only other things I have, which are not on the agenda, is there's a lot of concern with what's going on in center town, but there's also a lot of concern of the development down by the lip, then Lake Nip. That has to be looked at closely. The developer is looking for a lot of things that, it's an area of environmental concern, and we have to watch that closely, and I hope the town council pays attention to that area. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but that needs to be watched closely because they have a lot going on there. And so that's all I have to say. Hopefully, I'll have the answers on the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Linda Schmuck, 15 Sunset Lane. I want to, oop, get my... Talk about the development that Janet just mentioned across the street from Lake Nip, known as the Lakeshore Center Phase Four. Phase Four because they already have two apartment complexes, at least two office buildings, and a hotel. They have, and I think many of you may have received emails from citizens, they have submitted their final environmental report to MIPA, also notice of change. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that we do need to keep close watch on this. They are proposing a five-story, 110-room hotel, a four-story, 225-unit, 55-plus residential community, a two-story, 80-bed, inpatient rehab hospital, a 179-seat restaurant, and a one-story café, including a drive-thru. This is going to impact our water situation in town, our traffic situation in town, at least 14 acres of tree cutting, and as Janet mentioned, it's an area of environmental concern. The Nip and the wetlands, Hakamok Swamp that surrounds it, it's all connected, and it's going to affect our community if the development is not done right. We need to keep their feet to the fire, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Donna Jewell, Keith Place. I'm here tonight because when I try to come and ask questions, I want to try to have my facts straight, so I attempt to do as much research as possible prior to bringing anything forward to the council. But what I'm about to ask you tonight, I would appreciate if it could be entered into the record and responded to at the next town council meeting, because I know you cannot do that. You can't answer the questions tonight. Back in November, I think it was, actually, it's November 12, there was an ordinance FY2511 that allocated a little over $1 million to the school district, and it was for capital improvement projects. So in the business that I'm in, I watch a lot of public bid requests and postings, and I hadn't seen much of anything come out for BR. So I put in a public records request to find out what the bids, when the bids were posted, what the results were. And I did that at the beginning of June. The district has been cooperative. I don't want you to think that they have not been. That's not my concern here. But right now, they've only been able to provide me with information on six of the projects. There were 11 in total that were listed, and that leaves about between 700,000 and 800,000 of the $1 million unaccounted for in terms of not being spent. I'm a little concerned about that because it's been 10 months, well, almost eight months, I'm sorry, now that that money has been allocated to the district. And I understand from our policies, we transfer the money to the district upon approval of the ordinance, and it's up to the district to handle that responsibly. One of the items in there was allocated to be, or estimated to be, a $200,000 project, but the bid results actually came in at 65,000. So one of my questions is, what happens to the rest of that money? Does that come back to the town? That's $135,000. Or does it, can the district, I don't believe the district can use it for anything other than capital, but if that money comes back, can we donate it back to the school district for a teaching position? I don't know, but there's about $800,000 that I can't figure out where it is. I did put in a second request, and the district has been cooperative and said they'll look further into it. There was a Williams Middle School roof repair listed for 25,000, and they did tell me that they, that repair did not go forward, so they will need to return the 25,000 to the town. There was a high school HVAC upgrade that was done in-house for 16,000 instead of its estimate of 40,000. So again, does the 24,000 come back? No matter what we find and all of that, I would just like to make a recommendation that the council consider through the town manager, adopting a new policy, that when we allocate money to the district, that perhaps the finance department sets it up into a different account, and then upon submission of the invoices, draws off of that account that's allocated to the district. The money would be there for them, but then there'd be accountability on all levels. And just, I know we're running out of time, but my last thing is, part of another public records request, I saw that at the middle, at the middle school, $172,000 was spent on window shades. The invoice was, came in, it was dated March 5, from Suburban Glass and Mirror. I don't know if they needed a window shade in every single room, but when I hear the teachers saying that they're crying for support for other teachers and teachers' positions, it seems to me that was an exorbitant amount of money to spend on window shades. I'd write, you know, if my house needs window shades and I can't afford it all, I'll do the bedrooms are where it's absolutely needed. I don't know. It's just raising a lot of questions and concerns. I will, I did write up brief notes here, so they can be answered at the next town council meeting. I'll just hand them out.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Donna. And there's also a comment period at the end as well. There's also a comment period at the end, too, if you want to come back and finish at the end.
Hello, council. My name is Mike Flaherty, 120 High Street. I'm here tonight because my family's property has been adversely impacted by contaminated river sediment. My father was here last week. When we first heard that the property had some contamination on it by the contractor 18 months ago, we thought, we weren't really worried because we figured, you know, the town has a bonded and insured professional contractor. They hired a environmental engineer to oversee the cleanup of the river, and we also thought that the town had many contracts in place that would hold, like Donna said, hold contractors accountable for the work that was being done. Here we are, two years from when the sediment was taken out of the river, 18 months since we've been notified, and we are probably farther away from getting it cleaned up than we are, where we were that day. And one of the things I need to get to tonight is, my father and I's Freedom of Information Act requests are currently being denied, quote-unquote, due to active litigation. We have hired an attorney, but we are not suing the town. In fact, everything we're trying to do is to avoid litigation, and I think it's unfair if, if the town can drop sediment on your property from a project, it's unfair to withhold information such as, who signed as the generator of this waste? Who signed the DEP permits allowing the contractor to dig this waste out of the river? One fact that's pretty widely understood by all the project team is that the PCBs were known in the river before the project was even put out to bid. So it is interesting to see every step along the way, we're kind of being left out to dry. Point number two we want to make is, we invite the council to meet with us and certainly explore the special conditions of the contract that was signed by the contractor and the town and the environmental engineer. And I, there's, section 180 has so much rules and regulations on what this contractor has to do, and I'm going to just read one sentence. It says, "Contractor shall remove sediments for disposal in accordance with all mass DEP statutes, policies, and regulations. The contractor shall be responsible for the proper coordination, transportation, disposal, recycling, and reuse of contaminated soil." So this is before the contractor even sets on site. They know, they're aware. And then lastly, we were able to get one Freedom Information Act request and, due to a change order, that specifically related to the material that was dumped on our land. In this change order, the contractor, the contractor asked the town for an additional $155,000 to transport 230 tons of PCB material. The total tonnage taken out was 60 to 80 tons. We would just like to make sure that they did not charge the town for that 155. They only charged for the 60 to 80 that they did, and if there is additional funds, if that could be used to clean up the remaining mess that's on our property. We have asked through the Freedom Information Act for change order number seven and change order number 14, which is related to all the extra waste that the contractor had to dispose of. And we could even make an argument that the lump sum bid should have carried some of these costs, and that the contractor was able to, I don't know if a good word is manipulate, but organize this project, saying, this is an extra, this is an extra, this is an extra, but we need to see that information to make sure the town is not getting overbilled by this contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and speak? All right, thank you very much. And there is another comment period at the end, if you'd like to come up at the end. Okay, next up, we are moving on to appointments. First up, we have appointments for the TIF Ad hoc Oversight Committee.
Can I do a point of information regarding the Ad hoc Oversight Committee?
Sure.
I'd like to move to postpone this appointment definitively until the new town manager has taken his position as the town, at the first town council meeting in July.
Okay.
Second?
Have some reasoning if you want me to give that, or?
There's a second, so discussion?
Is that a motion at table, then, or?
It is to, it is to postpone it definitively. Well, when I looked it up legally.
So definitively would be to a set date?
Yes, and that's why I said the first meeting in July.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that part. So it's a moving to postpone.
I'm sorry, for some reason, this doesn't seem to.
I just couldn't hear it, sorry. Postpone to, what, the date? Did you have a date?
Yes, I think it's July 8. Is it July 8?
15.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, that's proper.
July 15.
Yep.
Okay. So yes, it's for a definitive date, not to abolish it altogether, but if you want my reason, you want my reasoning on it?
Yeah, we're at a discussion.
Okay. So the Committee on Economic Development, as we've said before, already exists within our, without, in our council, and one of the three members assigned to the new committee is actually on that, the old committee, the standing committee. I think we would have heard, or we will hear later, that two of the members of the newly assigned committee would not be eligible to serve on it, so those would have to be replaced, so it couldn't be voted on today anyway because of that difference. I think I'm right on that. And, and it could be very easily done at the CED, at the existing CED committee, to have others come in, like the head of the planning board, those people to come and speak to us, who are the people that you need to have talk to you about the TIF. We've got all the information, we've studied it all. Some of us have been doing it for over 20 years. So it's just my recommendation that we move it back until the new town manager is here, and we have, we can just go straight forward after that.
Okay. Any? Any discussion from other councilors? Seeing none. All those in, all right, let's do a roll call on this one.
Excuse me, I do have a question belatedly. You're talking about putting off all of the appointments tonight, or just the first?
No, just this one. Just this one, yes, yes, definitely, yes.
Okay.
Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
It was, it was originally, what we would be voting on would be a committee of five. That was what was recommended. I don't believe that's going to be able to go forward tonight. I think it would be a committee of three, which wasn't what we would be voting on.
Any further discussion before we do go to that roll call vote? Okay, seeing none. Debbie, please.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we'll move forward with the appointments then. The first appointment is Councilor Strigles. Do I have a motion for approval to the ad hoc committee?
Some of.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McGrath. Any discussion on Councilor Strigles' appointment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So it's one, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have Councilor Murphy. Do I have a motion for approval of Councilor Murphy to the ad hoc committee?
Some of.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Perry, for seconding. And any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
I don't think everyone's voting.
Aye. So, aye. Councilor Hunt, did you vote?
Just been abstaining.
Okay.
Clearly not in favor of it.
Okay, so it's six to?
There has to be a basis for abstaining, otherwise it's a no.
Okay. I've just been abstaining because I think it's clear that I'm not in favor of this since I presented the other proposal.
Well, then the appropriate.
I'll say I abstain. I'll say it.
So that's a no vote?
An abstention's a no.
Because, yeah, you're obligated by the rules of the council to, to vote.
To vote, yes or no?
And, and the only way to abstain under the rules is actually to provide a reason that the president could determine is like a conflict of interest, or you're recusing yourself. Those are the typical ones.
I thought it would be obvious.
Do you have the votes tallied? Okay, great. Six to two, okay. Next one, appointing Councilor McGrath to the ad hoc committee. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, six to. And moving on to our fourth and fifth appointments, it comes to my understanding that we may not be able to make these, but I'll defer to Councilor, or sorry, Town Manager Robinson.
Thanks for clarifying that. We learned in the process late last week that due to the charter, because the two individuals listed here are not town residents, they cannot serve. They are still willing to support the committee and from a staff perspective, to attend meetings, to offer their professional advice, but they wouldn't be members of the committee. So you should pass over, my recommendation is you pass over those.
Okay. But they could still lend their expertise and, and otherwise aid, but not in an official capacity. Okay, so we'll just skip past those appointments then. Next, we'll go to B appointment, this is a new appointment, Conservation Commission.
Excuse me, point of order. That was for a five-person committee that we voted on last time. We've now done a three-person committee?
I believe it was up to five.
Was one of those people already serving on the CED committee?
Have to look at the exact, your clerk probably has a writing of what the actual order was, but I believe it was up to five as well. I'm just going off the top of my head.
It was just in the minutes that we voted into the record.
And so I would say that come at the next meeting, the town manager could offer up two other appointments if he wanted it to be five, and have, had time to consider that.
Okay.
So there needs to be two more appointments, if that's how it reads.
We learned late in the process that this change had to be made, so we weren't able to change the agenda in time to add two names.
Okay. Are we able to, well, how do we proceed with making those two other appointments?
Just at the next meeting, you'll have to have someone on the agenda to be appointed.
Okay.
So you can get to your five.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to our next appointment, to the Conservation Commission. This'll be for Deborah Ann Campbell, the term of 2025. Again, this is for the Conservation Commission. There is a resume and application attached. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Dr. Perry, thank you, Councilor Strigles. And any discussion on the appointment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have a number of reappointments.
Point of clarification, I guess, can we take these collectively since they're reappointments? Is that in order?
We discussed this.
No, their appointments got to individual.
Because each one involves a different commission and each one is serving for a different purpose.
Yeah. Yeah. We will, we'll go, we'll go right through it. So first is Conservation Commission, Harry Bailey, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Onto the next reappointment, Elder Affairs Commission, Gloria Lemieux, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Elder Affairs Commission, Mary Lou Harding, term of 2025 to 2026. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Last one for the Elder Affairs Commission, Robin Sherrick, term 2025 to 2026. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
And any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Historical Commission, David Moore, term of 2025 to 2027. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Ellenberg. And any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Historical Commission, Sharon Anderson, term of 2025 to 2028. Motion for approval?
Some, second.
And any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Open Space Commission, Eileen Heine, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Open Space Commission again, Maureen Minasian, term of 2025 to 2027. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
And any discussion?
Aye.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Parks and Recreation, Michael Flaherty, term of 2025 to 2026. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some moves.
Second.
And any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? A motion carries. Plating Board, Patrick Driscoll, term 2025 to 2030. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some moves.
Second. Thank you. And any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tree Committee, Raymond Ajiman, term 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Great, motion carries. Tree Committee, Shirley Krasinski, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, everyone, last one. Zoning Board of Appeals, Daniel Greenberg, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, so those are all of our appointments and reappointments. Thank you for all of our dedicated citizens for serving on our boards, committees, and commissions. Next, we have no hearings or licensed transactions, no presentations, so we'll now move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to first report on the fire station project. You should have all received the monthly report for that. Things continue to go well down there. I actually had a chance to tour the building with the fire chief last week, and it's coming along, the floors, the floor, appar, floor is poured. Lot of work happening inside the building to be putting in electricals and plumbing and all the sorts of HVAC things that go inside before the walls go up. And you can see the brick veneer going up on the outside. Project stay, is on schedule. We're on budget. We have had to dip into contingency a little bit to address winter conditions for the cold period that happens, happened last winter, but we still remain on budget for that. So happy to take any questions if anybody has on that. Just a quick question, when you say on schedule, is still anticipating a move-in of later this year, December timeframe? I would say December to maybe late January, somewhere in there. Close to on time. Close enough, yes.
Any questions on the fire station update? Okay.
Next, I followed up with the chief about East Street. There was concern about traffic enforcement. What I understand from him is that they have done on traffic enforcement over the years at different times, different occasions, and they haven't found excessive speeding by trucks, which is what I think the complaint has been in the past. But nevertheless, they're going to send out the proactive enforcement officers again to at least do one day and one evening of enforcement in that area. And they're going to move the digital sign, which reminds people how fast they're going over the speed limit to try to raise awareness and see if just more presence there and those measures can address the situation that people are concerned about.
Okay. Any questions on East Street?
Yeah. Thank you very much. They'll be very happy. I've gotten a lot of emails on that. Thank you.
These needs, these things need to be done cyclically, you know? If people don't see police up for a while, they may think it's a good place to speed and a little reminder's never a bad thing.
Well, the residents appreciate that you take the steps and you follow through quickly, so they appreciate it.
Absolutely. In terms of National Grid, I have talked to National Grid at times over the last year regarding the Cherry Street area. They, I, what I can't, I can tell you that they are working towards addressing tree, trimming in that area. They have a plan in place to do some of that. They were just out there and realized that some of the trees actually are above the size of bucket truck that they have most available to them, so they're going to have to schedule that with other equipment. And they're not able to give us a date for that. But I think, I think this whole matter will probably be better taken care of in the coming months because we have appointed a tree warden. He's a gentleman who's retired from full-time work, but he lives somewhat nearby. He's eminently qualified and very interested in helping us improve our efforts in terms of trees and advising and working with the utility companies when things are noticed and making sure that our needs are attended to. So I think, I think we're in a good place for going into the future to work on that. So that's really all I have to tell you about that right now. And then lastly, there was a question about the FY26 roadway plan. So got a couple of streets to cover, first of all, right outside here, South Street, if you've been down there in the last day or two, you've seen that the milling machine has been out milling down the road from Central Square to Crescent Street. And the next steps there are to then come back and put a skim coat of pavement just over that, raise all the castings, the sewer manhole covers, the water services and so on, fix the sidewalks along there, and then come back over the summer and do the full paving of that section. I know there's been some frustration about, you know, notice and how quickly this seemed to come up. We, like a lot of communities, have struggled because there are just two contractors who are on the, the bid that we can use for this type of work. And we've had a lot of rain this spring. So between having work rained out and everybody trying to get their work done, we had an opening to start it yesterday, and we did. So apologize for any inconvenience, but hoping to button up most of it this week and then wait to see when we can get that company back to finish that. We're also continuing our work on Flag Street. That drainage work should be wrapping up soon, at which point they'll turn to the road reconstruction phase to actually dig up the road and put the new bed down and put a binder coat down of pavement, and then come back late summer and put the final coat down. So when Counselor Kennedy had asked me that, I said, by email, I said the answer ideally is that wraps up by end of summer, but again, it's weather and company dependent. So, but it's a high priority for us to get it done. We also had planned to start Winter Street this year, but our latest cost projections are a little above what we can afford to spend right now. So waiting for this governor's budget to, state budget to be resolved, perhaps some of the transportation funds that are in, that come from the millionaire's tax may allocate a few more dollars to us as well as other communities, and hopefully we can get that going. But we're ready to go out to bid, we're just wanting to make sure that when we do, it's a worthwhile endeavor. And then lastly, Main Street is planned, as you know from the override discussion, we would plan to spend that $500,000 to mill and overlay Main Street from Central Square to High Street. That's the goal for this year. And then going forward, and we talked a little bit about what do we do if that money does get approved each year, and I think we've talked loosely about there are options to that, that you all should discuss with the next town manager. Whether you set up a roadway stabilization fund and you wait till your free cash is certified, then you put a specific amount in, and then you plan to spend that, you know, in order to spend that specific amount. Whether you have it as a reoccurring line in the budget and there's diligence exercised by everyone that you're going to continue to fund that 500 and maybe add to it each year. Those are options you can consider, you just have to find the right choice for this community.
Any questions on roadway update?
Yes, I would like to ask, is there any way that we can see to the parking lot at the senior center?
So we are seeing to the back part of the parking lot. Last week, I went down there with DPW and met with the director to talk about the area that's cordoned off in the back. We agreed that we'd give them some dates where the, didn't have any major things planned to be able to have them come in and dig it out and try to stabilize it and replace it. Well, they came the next day, which was great, except we had Father's Day celebration and a lot of guests coming. So we had to turn them away, but that's still planned to be done fairly shortly. It's just to patch that and remove those Jersey barriers, but we'll give them a lot more utilization of that parking lot for lots of things. Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? Is, is Cross Street supposed to be paved soon as well? I can't remember seeing it, if I saw that on our list.
That's one of the ones that needs to be really thought through with the overall roadways plan for the future and how to fund that and other major streets that need not and other major streets that need, uh, not only pavement work, but perhaps underground utilities.
Okay, thank you. Um, any general questions for town manager for, uh, future meeting? No. Um, I have, I have one, um, request for, for this weekend. Uh, we've done a great job of override outreach, and thank you to you and everybody who's made those efforts of having informational, um, sessions. We have the signs up right now. Can we have those changed to Saturday morning to a vote today, so that people know that the vote is, is Saturday?
I've asked, because staff would have to come in perhaps on overtime, I've asked them to change it late on Friday so that it's known that it's next, it's next morning. Vote tomorrow, Ju- June 21st, middle school, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay. Will that also, um, can we also get that done at the transfer station as well?
I'm sorry?
Could, there's a sign at the transfer station as well. Can we also get that one changed?
I can check.
Okay, great, thanks.
I have another question. Um, I understand that, um, the cards that were sent out with the yes or no box, some people have tried to vote on those cards. Is that so? And how do we propose to handle that?
I've heard that rumor, what we simply did was exactly show what would go on a ballot. And I can, I guess I can appreciate why some people may find that confusing, but I would say to them is, you know, your opportunity to vote is to either come in tomorrow or Friday during office hours or come to the middle school on Saturday.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, next, we have no discussions. Uh, do we have any committee reports? No? Okay. Moving on, uh, legislations for action. First up is Order OFY 25 dash 068, United Steelworkers Bargaining Contract Ratification. Finance Committee did not meet, uh, last night. Budget and Finance, uh, did meet tonight. I would be looking to continue this to our next meeting so that we could wait upon, um, the comments from the Finance Committee. And, um, Councilor Murphy, do you have any, uh, reports from our meeting earlier?
Uh, no, we decided to continue this, uh, order to the next scheduled Budget and Finance meeting.
Okay, great.
And the outcome hopefully of the Finance Committee meeting as well.
Great. And, um, so do I have a motion to, uh, continue this to our next meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Council Strickles, Council Ellenberg, and any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next, Order OFY 25 dash 069, United Steelworkers Collective Bargaining Appropria- uh, Appropriization Transfer. Uh, again, Finance Committee did not meet last night. We did meet, um, earlier today, uh, in Budget and Finance, rather. And we'd also be looking to continue this for the same reason. This is the, um, the transfer of funds, which is related to the previous order. Uh, anything further from Councilor Murphy?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, great. Uh, so do I have a motion, uh, to continue this to our next meeting?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And any, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. And next one, Order OFY 25 dash 070, Non-Union Affiliated Positions Appropriization Transfer. Uh, similar situation to the previous two, uh, Finance Committee did not meet, and, uh, Budget and Finance, um, we decided to, um, continue it to our next meeting as well. And, uh, Councilor Murphy, anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Um, so same thing, I'd like to, um, entertain a motion to continue this to our next meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next one, Proposed Zoning Ordinance, uh, FY 25 018, a zoning map amendment, um, for Business B and Residency Districts. This is in the area of Bedford Street, Winter Street, and Flag Street area. Uh, we previously, um, moved to change the sponsor of this to Counselor, uh, Perry. Um, and we would look for a, um, a motion to refer to advertising, and we could have, uh, further discussion. So, uh, do I have a motion to refer to advertising?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And any, uh, discussion? Dr. Perry, do you have any, uh, comments on this?
Yep, just as far as, you know, taking over the sponsor for, uh, Councilor Chase, who's no longer with us, uh, I was happy to do so. Uh, this has been already, already vetted by the, uh, Planning Board and, uh, CED, uh, committees, um, prior to the election. And, um, the letter you see attached with this, uh, shows that the, uh, Planning Board voted 5-0 to recommend. So again, just sent to advertising, and we'll bring it up at our next meeting.
Okay, great. Uh, do you have any further discussion?
Uh, I have a question. I see that this says that, um, to remove properties currently residential in use or as approved by subdivision. So, uh, maybe the town manager could, uh, answer, um, uh, how are the residential properties being taken? And what's happening with all that?
I'm afraid I don't have an answer for you. I'd have to ask, uh, the CED department.
I believe we're just removing them out of the business district and then moving them into, uh, the residential district.
It was just a small change to some of the properties that are mostly residential at this time that extend into the commercial, uh, zoning. So we are just rezoning those pieces of those properties to residential, um, so they can be, um, developed appropriately.
Thank you. And the, and the Planning Board and the Zoning Board have approved this?
Uh, Planning Board reviewed this with the CED Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was a 5-0 recommendation, and, um, I think in our, our agenda packet, anything shaded, uh, was previously in the business district and would be now part of the residential, uh, district. So those particular properties are shaded. Um, it's hard to find their exact lot numbers, but I'm sure we could get that information if we need to look into it further. But we'll, uh, refer this to advertising if it's obviously our will, uh, to do that. And then we could have, uh, we'll have our hearing and further discussion then as well. So, uh, do I have a motion, um, oh, so we do have a motion on the table to refer, so, um, all those in favor of referring to advertising?
Aye.
And any opposed? No, motion carries, thank you. Okay, uh, we have no old business, uh, for a new business. We have Order, uh, FY 25 dash 071, an order establishing a, um, TIF district for 60 to 86, uh, Broad Street. So, uh, what I'm looking for is a motion to refer to the ad hoc committee and, um, and further discussion. So do I have that motion? Uh, Council Strickles and a second by Councilor Ellenberg. Um, if I could just have the first comment here, um, and then, of course, Mr. Lindy. So this is, uh, a proposed, uh, district right now confined to, um, 60 to 86 Broad Street. Um, this is, right now is a, um, just a suggestion to the ad hoc committee, and then they could make those, their, um, their inferences and their suggestions back to the full council. Uh, so Counselor Murphy and I put this forward as just a suggestion, and of course, it's, it'll be the will of the, uh, ad hoc committee to, um, amend this as, as they so wish and then come, come back to us. Uh, but please, um, Counselor Lindy.
So my question is, how do you refer to a committee if the committee is not complete?
Could we refer to a committee if there's a quorum, there's three of five? Can we do that, um?
If there's three of five in the committee?
Three of five have been appointed, so can we still refer to them?
To the tip?
To the ad hoc committee? Can we refer this?
I don't think the committee exists until you have five members under the way that, that order or ordinance is written.
Okay.
You have to fill the committee and then, cause it says five members, so.
Postpone to the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, good point.
Can I ask a question? Can we just amend that to bring it to three?
No, because I think you've already voted it.
You already voted it.
No, but I mean, can, when it comes back, can we just amend?
No, you'd have to bring forward a new order for a new ad hoc committee with the new makeup.
Okay.
So it's.
Those that voted in favor can't vote to reconsider and, and then amend, or?
No, you could have at the, at, at the meeting, it was actually voted.
Mm-hmm.
You could have, under the rules, voted to reconsider it at that meeting and brought it back up at that meeting. But since it's now already become an order, you can't now bring it back in.
Okay.
In that fashion.
Understood.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, then what we'll do then is look for a motion rather to, um, so, so we have to, so I'll, I'll rescind, uh, who made the motion to actually, um, refer to Council Strickles? So do you rescind that so that we can then continue this?
And I rescind my second.
Yeah, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, great. Um, so then I'll look for a motion to, um, just continue this to our, our next meeting then.
So moved.
Thank you, Council Strickles, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, okay, so all those in favor of referring to, um, or rather continuing this to our next meeting, uh, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
One abstention.
Thank you.
Just a question. Our next meeting, we could have a special meeting, correct?
We may have a special meeting.
Should we say July 15th?
Well, no, because we could put this on an agenda at a special meeting. Okay. Next up, new business acceptance of a donation, uh, Oliari Charitable Foundation, Bridgewater Public Library. And I am, uh, looking for a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Strickles. And, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, Order OFY 25 dash 073. Uh, this is for the, uh, for setting the town clerk's salary, and I am, um, entertaining a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and the, uh, Finance Committee.
Can I make a motion for discussion?
Uh, yes, so.
A second.
Second, and then for discussion, yes.
Uh, I just had a question on the, I know we'll discuss this at Budget and Finance, but just for knowledge. My understanding that the current town clerk's salary is eight, 87,000. This would move it to 93,270, which is a $6,000 difference or 6.9% increase. So I'm not sure where this came from, but I do see here it says grade 13, step 2. I'm assuming it's aligned with that next step, but, so the council's aware that's a big, in my eyes, giant step. So. I'm not, I think we should still refer, but that's just a comment that I thought we should make, because I don't know where that 93 came from.
Yeah, I have an email with the, uh, the current salary that, that does seem correct. So, yeah, speaking, speaking wholly to not only this salary, um, but salaries in general, I think that that is a, a large increase. And as it stands now, this is, um, what is being proposed, and it's something that I look forward to discussing with you further at Budget and Finance, and obviously the rest of the council. But I think that, uh, it, considering the financial situation that the town is in, that a single year raise of, of this percentage is not something that, um, I would necessarily be in favor of and something that we should look at very closely. Obviously, we have contractual obligations, so we need to, to look at that. But I am, uh, I'm with you on, uh, on concerns over that, that type of increase. Is there, uh, any further discussion on, um, on this?
Just a question, what was the current salary again?
87,127 dollars.
Thank you.
Now, it, it is unclear, um, to me that there may be additional hours. Um, I'm just reading through an email that was, uh, discussing the, uh, the rate. I thi- I think there may be additional hours, and then with the percentage increase, which may explain the, um, the, the larger increase. I think it's an increase in hours, an increase in, in rate. So we should take a, a little bit more of a fine-tooth comb over that when we meet at our Budget and Finance.
Could I defer you to the town manager? I don't know if there's, uh, I don't know if the town clerk follows a certain step method here that our other town employees follow, or it's solely on their own.
I mean, as elected official, the, the salary's completely up to the council, what the Senate at. Um, I don't know, because it's elected, I'm not sure where it does fall on a, on a grid. But if it is a combination of hours and rate, then that's probably what does make up the higher amount than what might seem typical. We certainly can get more information from the Finance Director as how we got to this number for your Budget and Finance meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor of referring to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Next up, we have, uh, Town Manager Goals, Order FY 25 dash 074. And, um, this is brought forward by Counselor Murphy. Um, I'm looking for a motion to refer to Strategic Planning Committee and then further discussion. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And, uh, any discussion on, uh, the Town Manager Goals? I'll ask, uh, Counselor Murphy to introduce this to us.
Yes, so I saw that, uh, in prior years, I believe the last time it was done was FY 23. Uh, so it hasn't been consistent, but now's the time to get consistent with Town Manager Goals with our new incoming town manager. Uh, so I thought it was good to type this up and share it with the council and the public to know what our expectations are of our incoming town manager. I don't think there'll be any surprises in here. It addresses drinking water, roadway plan, uh, town operations as a whole, economic development strategy, strategy. Uh, it talks about who's responsible. It talks about how we will measure success, and then there's a brief, short explanation at the bottom. And so, uh, I think this just gives us a good plan to move forward with as a town council, uh, on what we will, um, review our next town manager on as well, too.
Great. Any further, um, discussion? Council Ellenberg?
Yes. I would like to add one item under exemplary town operations. And I'd like to add another dot, conduct a forensic audit on the golf course or other budget areas as needed.
Uh, Council Ellenberg, do you want to amend that tonight, or do you want to just make that comment now and then we could continue to have those discussions?
I, I think, uh, further discussion in depth is necessary, and so I'm just making a comment now.
All right, great.
I have a question for, um, Council Murphy. So the council's gonna, uh, make up the questions, but then it goes to the review, com- ad hoc committee?
Yeah, so the idea was, I'm sorry, if you can answer. I, I just wanted to set a foundation for this, uh, to refer to strategic planning, so that, that if they feel like they wanted to change it or get more specific, or add, or subtract, or, um, get feedback, else why? I just wanted to set a foundation for this.
So the last one that you look at, do they put like points, you know, how do they rate him or her?
Yeah, this wasn't on the rating system itself, it was just the goal. So it was just a resolution, I mean, uh, an order on the goals.
No, I just had not seen the last one, so I was wondering if you looked back to the last one and how they did it. That's all.
Yeah, I can address that. So, um, again, the, the goals do fall, uh, fall under purview of strategic planning. So that will be reviewed. There was some work done, uh, the last time goals were set, uh, was with, uh, Council Eric Moore when he was president. And I worked with him on that committee to work on Town Manager Goals at that point in time. But that was right around the time that we lost, um, Mr. Dutton as well, and then we got into the interim town manager position. So those goals weren't set up going forward at that time due to the interim position. So now that we have a new permanent one, now would be the time to start looking at these goals. So I think, you know, uh, Council Murphy's, uh, putting this together, combined with the prior, um, paperwork that was done, uh, under Council Moore will have enough, um, you know, good, uh, background information to start setting these goals. And again, obviously, I think some conversations need to be had with, uh, the new town manager once he does take, uh, his seat starting July 1st. So, uh, it'll be a process, but, uh, I think to get the ball rolling now is appropriate.
Counsel Lindy?
Just wanted to thank Counsel Murphy for a good foundation. I would like to, uh, and I'll put it into the agenda when we discuss it, but I'd like to see, um, earlier communication with the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District to, uh, have more information about financing that we need prior to putting the town budget together. I think, had we had information earlier, because we've taken a lot of criticism out there on social media, um, about, you know, not getting a lot of information. And I think the earlier we get it to Budget and Finance and to the full council, the easier it will be.
Great, thank you. Any further comments?
Just one quick comment on Council McGrath, just to go back to your question. There is a schedule in the current, uh, or the new town manager's contract of how that'll work. But I, I'd like your suggestion of maybe tying how we'll rate the town manager to the specific goals. As it exists right now, I think we rate them on a one through five scale, five being the best, one the worst, on, um, different areas that relate to or kind of relate to these goals, but it might be good to look at that holistically. I know we did a few years ago, but I think it's always good to kind of fold it together.
Okay, I kind of wrote some up and looked into it when we were hiring the new town manager, even though I wasn't on the ad hoc at times. But yeah, I'll send him over to you.
Don't send it to me, send it to Strategic Planning.
Dr. Perry is the chair of Strategic. Yeah, just, um, just a couple of comments from me, and then, uh, if I'm wrong on anything, please, um, uh, Counsel Murphy, correct me, because you did the contract with, uh, Mr. Casanova Davis, that it is in his contract that these goals are set sometime between July and September, I believe. And, uh, Counsel Murphy and I taught, discussed getting the ball rolling earlier, sooner rather than later on this. I like the idea of kind of hitting the ground running and, and getting this working. That's why, uh, I asked, uh, Counsel Murphy to introduce this tonight, and then strategic planning can meet over the next few weeks. Um, of course, Mr. Casanova Davis will start July 1st, and then we could all kind of be in concert here, um, focusing on some goals uh, and setting, setting forward intentions for the, the rest of the year. So I like the time, the time schedule of, of where we're at, we're being proactive, as, as Ms., uh, Mr. Lindy said. So we are, um, staying ahead of the game, and then later on, as, as, um, Counselor McGrath mentioned, we will be doing a review. And I think that comes under the Review Committee, right? So Strategic Planning and Review Committee will hopefully work together in making sure that those things are aligned, as you guys were, were just discussing. So I would also just encourage, um, the other councilors, if you're interested in participating in this process, and I would encourage you to do so, to, um, attend the strategic planning, um, meetings and let, uh, Debbie over here know so we could have that properly posted if you are going to. Okay, great. Just, just in case we're all there. Uh, yeah, we should all have input into this. Obviously, the committees are set up for a reason to dive deep into this, but, um, with something as important as goals for a new town manager, I think it's really important to have everybody's input. So I look forward to your attendance and then, you know, some, uh, email communication where appropriate.
I would just add to that, I encourage the public to attend that meeting as well. So we should advertise it widely so the public can attend and give feedback on that as well.
Yeah, even better, and, um, Yeah, even better, and, um, Dr. Perry will work on getting those meetings, uh, scheduled after tonight, we'll refer that, and, um, yeah, we'll just keep, we'll keep up the, the work here. Uh, so with that being said, um, if there's no further discussion, we will, uh, take it to a vote. Uh, all those in favor in referring to Strategic Planning Committee, say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, uh, that is all for new business, so we'll move on to the second citizen comment period. Due to Matt, uh, Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may come up and comment, uh, at this time for up to three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Right on eighty Austin Street, two points. You just appointed two people to a non-existent organization in the town of Bridgewater. The Open Space Commission is non-existent, it's the Open Space Committee. Those two people that you appointed are phenomenal, but you act, whoever put this together needs to be a little bit more careful about what they put out for you guys to vote on. The second thing is, I really liked the discussion on the Town Manager Review, but I'm going to ask you as a committee person, uh, on two committees, that you include the committees in a three sixty evaluation of the town manager. Specifically, a three sixty, and I, I hear, see head nods, I think some of you know what that means. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Janah Hansen Pleasant Street. Um, just a couple of things on the TIF situation, it's come up before, I know everybody's learning, but you gotta investigate things a little better. I mean, here, you're doing a ad, ad hoc committee, and you can't have non-citizens apply on a, be on a committee, so these things should maybe slow down a little bit, investigate before you start, um, putting people on a committee. And, um, I, that's the only comment I have on that, is to investigate a little bit better. Tree trimming, finnish grid, I've often wondered, why are they trimming now? There's leaves, bird's nests, mammals, everything's living in those trees, and they're gonna be trimming them now. How come they don't trim them when there's no leaves? You know, I don't understand why the tree trimming is now. That's something to really consider, um, tree committee, but also for, you know, for people who are concerned about wildlife, you know, you don't want to be chopping down somebody's home. And I know it's a trimming, but you never know what's in the, in the trimming. And the other thing is the parking lot behind Star's Gas Station, Perry Winkle's that area, I use that on the weekends, um, because I don't shop during the week, but that needs to be fixed, and it's been brought up, um, by Mr. McKinnon several times, it's been brought up over the time. That's a usable parking lot, but there's no sign, good signage, and the driveway entrance is terrible. And I've seen people go out the inn, it's only supposed to be one way, and I've seen people go out, but, um, that really should be fixed. If we, if there's some way of getting that parking lot fixed and paved, it would, could be utilized better. I'm in it all the time on the weekends, and, um, it's free. Weekdays, it's cost money, I'm not going where I have to pay money. So that's something to consider. And I'm hoping that everything that you postpone to the next meeting is for the next meeting, not a special meeting, it was mentioned, I don't know what the special meeting would be, but, um, make it for a regular meeting to make things easier for, to keep track of. So appreciate everything, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stefano Demilia, thirty-five Harvest Lane. Um, we've had quite a few conversations in this room, um, the last few meetings, and I'm just curious to know, um, where we stand with our water infrastructure. I know we talk about TIFs that help certain people, we talk about overrides that help certain people, but for me, when you talk about the water, it affects a newborn to someone that's a hundred years old, so it affects everybody. I know there's such a thing called a Water Impact Report, I don't know if those have been done, um, over the last couple of years. As a former Planning Board member, I used to see them come in on certain projects. I know we have, someone had mentioned four or five new, um, projects being brought up by the NIP. I know we have some down in the downtown, I know we have some small ones, some big ones, but I don't hear, uh, see anything being talked about as far as water. I know we have a vending machine down at the Town Barn, or the Highway Department, whatever you want to call it, but it's literally just a vending machine. I don't know how that helps anybody, other than filling up a couple gallons of the water, bringing it home and using that to drink with. There's a lot of ad hoc committees, or the, these committees that are put together in several different things that you guys talk about, but maybe some kind of a committee that can put something together and talk about water at some of these meetings, and where we're headed. I know the town of Easton, somehow, I don't know how they did it, maybe we could reach out to them, I said this before, a while back, they had a PFAS problem, and miraculously, it's gone. So they have a formula on how to fix it, maybe a phone call, or, I don't know, maybe an email, maybe someone can drive over and talk to someone and make a plan. I don't know what it costs, I have no idea, but there is definitely a solution out there, somewhere. Also, there was something just mentioned that you're gonna change zoning from residential and add commercial to it, is, did I understand that correctly?
There were residential homes that were in a commercial district.
Residential homes in a commercial district? And what is the new zoning, it's gonna be for both?
The, um, the, the homes where there, that are residential homes that are currently in a commercial district?
Yep.
The line would move so that those residential homes were now in a residential district?
Strictly residential.
Yes.
So if there was a right-of-way or an easement of some sort, now it's strictly for residential use only?
That, that would, that'd be, uh, probably a question for the Planning Board. I, I wouldn't know the answer.
Does, does the right-of-way change, the usage change for a right-of-way, from residential to commercial, or commercial to residential?
This is, this isn't on the meeting agenda. This is probably stuff that would be on a meeting agenda, so if it is, I think you're violating the Open Meeting Law by having this discourse.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So, maybe that's a question that we can answer next time. Do, do easements and right-of-ways change usage when you change zoning? That's, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, any, would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Donna Jewel Keith Place. I just wanted to, um, thank Blythe for the time she has spent here. As a resident, um, I've really appreciated your openness and your honesty and your willingness to communicate, that was really refreshing. I don't think there was one time when I emailed you that you didn't respond, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Uh, we'll now move over to, um, council comments, I'll start with, uh, Mr. Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to suggest that even though we are on summer vacation, we have one meeting a month, I know we may have to have a special meeting depending on what happens with the override, but maybe we should take, um, Mr. Demilia's suggestion and focus a meeting. We, we have under our rules and procedures, two meetings a year to do major discussions about things. Perhaps we should consider, I know we've had the water folks here, but the two biggest things on people's minds are water and so, and roads. So maybe we should just have those discussions over the summer. I, I'm in for Tuesday nights, I'm not looking for extra meetings, however, I just think we should consider them to address some of the pressing issues of the town. And don't forget to support the Fourth of July, um, they still have one more event, you can go support them at Barrett's. Council Ellenberg has a Fourth of July shirt on, they're still available for sale, and they're gonna need help this year with cleanup, because they do not have the cleanup folks, so, um, you know, I plan to go out the next day and help with the cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Hunt?
I wrote some things down. I wanted to really thank BCCR for their Juneteenth flag raising yesterday, it was lovely, and everyone enjoyed it, and, um, hope that people will consider going to the Juneteenth celebration at the university on Saturday. You can do both, you go there, and then you go over there, and, and you go back, enjoy both places. I wanted to say hooray for the TJ squared team. Ironically, what, we have four kids, when they went to Bridgewater Rainham Regional Schools, our two sons missed out on it, they were there too early, our, the oldest of our two daughters was one of the first three girls to be on the team, she was the first one as a sophomore, and our second daughter was there, so we have a big heart for the TJ squared team, they're really wonderful, and the shirts that they're wearing were all made by Jack Faniff, so he's, he's always great and fun. I wanted to say hooray for the water ban, that's nice, I don't know how long it'll last, but hooray water ban. And, um, I was just gonna say what Mark said, uh, Fourth of July Parade, I hope the councilors will all march. I'm planning on being there to march in the Fourth of July Parade, so bring your families and march along with the babies and all again, another time. And, uh, oh yeah, finally, I'm hoping for a calm and successful election on Saturday, uh, seven AM to eight PM, and you can vote, as, uh, as our president said, you can vote in the town clerk's office until noon on Friday, not on Thursday, they'll be closed, but get your votes in, thanks.
Thank you. Council Murphy?
Yeah, just a quick update, I didn't give a committee update, I was, I think, spacing on the, uh, override mailing and people using that to vote, so I, I lost track of that, but just to give folks a quick update, we did discuss three items on the agenda for Budget and Finance, the first being the golf course. Uh, we talked about how it's brought in four hundred thousand-ish dollars in revenue to the town, uh, this past year, FY twenty, excuse me, FY twenty-four last year, and so, uh, I thought it was excellent to see, uh, that that was producing revenue and giving back to the general fund of the town. There were some good, uh, conversations and presentations in there, so happy to answer any questions if anybody has some, uh, aside from that. The next thing we talked about was grants that the town has received in the past three years. Bridgewater averages around eight million dollars in grants every year, uh, that will be a focus, obviously, of our new incoming town manager, uh, and perhaps maybe reflected in those goals, uh, but I think it's great to just, uh, be able to look back and see that the extra funding that's coming in to support some great projects, uh, roughly eight million dollars, which, um, Town Manager Robinson shared, that's a really good number to achieve in Bridgewater, too. And the last thing we discussed in that meeting was ARPA funds, uh, what Bridgewater's received for ARPA funds, and how they're being applied, mostly right now to our new fire station, uh, but there was some interesting, uh, conversation around that, too. Echo the sentiments around the Fourth of July, and the last, uh, opportunity at the Barrett's coming up, and I know the committee is still looking for funds and volunteers, so, uh, just echoing the statements that are already made. Uh, encouraging folks to come out and then, uh, attend First Responders Day, I've attended the last couple of years, uh, it's a super great event. Uh, my son loves it for the fact that he can see the trucks, and, and so, it's, it's an awesome event down there, and the people that put that on are great. Uh, I also wanted to thank, um, Town Manager Robinson for her dedication to the town once again, uh, and being a good partner for me as a counselor, uh, you are always available to meet and answer questions as well, so thank you for that. Welcome to our new town manager, uh, and encourage everybody to get out and vote on Saturday. Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you, um, yeah, um, many of the same sentiments, um, I want to congratulate TJ squared for their success, uh, and hopefully continued success. I want to thank, uh, and congratulate, uh, Jimmy Beatty on, uh, his years of service to the town as a firefighter, and, and, uh, wish him a, a wonderful retirement. I want to thank all those that we appointed or reappointed to, um, boards, committees, and commissions tonight. Again, the town can't work without your help and volunteerism, so I do thank all those who, uh, brought their names back in to, uh, to help on those committees. I do certainly want to, um, thank, uh, Councilor Robinson, uh, our town manager, um, uh, for all the work that she's done, uh, the goal was to keep the town on the tracks, and, uh, she's certainly done that, and, uh, I appreciate all her help and support while I was, uh, sitting in the president's seat, uh, we worked very well together, and we got a lot of, lot of things done, uh, in the past year that, uh, I don't think, uh, any counselor, any council had to face in one term. So again, I thank you very much for all your help and support, and I wish you much success in the future. And then again, as, as we all know, the, uh, the election is this weekend, so again, please encourage everyone to come on out and cast a vote, um, and let your voice be heard, this is why we put it out there, to get this done, so, uh, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Strickles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to all who attended the Juneteenth flag raising yesterday, it was an excellent event that I was honored to speak at, and it truly made our town shine bright. I feel like these type of events have an outreach component that really, really, really goes afar and long way, and I thought that two shining examples of that were the two students that spoke, and for me, that is the shining example as to why investing in our students and investing in our children is paramount, and their futures are our future, so they shined extremely bright and made Bridgewater very proud. I also want to publicly express my concerns regarding the Lake Shore Phase Four project at the NIP. As the District One Counselor, that is my territory, those are my constituents, and we have absorbed quite a bit of development over the last decade, and I feel that it is, I'm always for responsible development, that's not responsible development. It's too much at one time, and needs to be thoroughly vetted and looked at, and not just for the environmental concerns, but the infrastructure component and everything that goes into it. So I wanted to publicly, I have gotten your emails, I wanted to publicly express my concern for that large scale of a project at this time. Finally, I also want to thank outgoing Town Manager Robinson for your commitment not only to the town, the council as a whole, but most importantly, to the residents. Your willingness to serve isn't something any of us should have ever taken for granted, you raised your hand, you were willing to come in at a very turbulent time, and you guided us through a time that I think a lot of us who are sitting amongst this council table did not foresee. So, any town that gets you and your expertise in your next endeavor is lucky, and I know we were lucky to have you, and you will be missed, that's all I have.
Thank you. Council Ellenberg?
Yes, I just want to reiterate our thanks to Ms. Robinson, she did a fine job as town manager. I also want to say, everybody, please vote on Saturday, and lastly, buy a T-shirt for a fundraiser, it'll help the Fourth of July Committee. That's it.
Thank you. And, uh, Vice President McGrath?
Mr. President, today I attended a mock trial at the Senior Center with District Attorney Tim Cruz and some of his staff running the trial. Employees and seniors played roles in this, as well as a couple of the, uh, senior residents and the police officers. Those of us who watched with the jury, it was very informative and yet really funny at times. I would hope that they would go to the junior high or high school, it was really interesting. Um, I've been to court before, but never on the side of the jury, so that was interesting. And Ms. Robinson, thank you, I've learned a lot from you, so, see you, for two weeks we have you? For one week. I won't be asking you any questions or going to meetings anymore, so you're set, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as, as for, we have a few, a few final comments here, um, Council Hunt briefly mentioned the total water bans been lifted, which is great, um, we'll see how long that lasts with the summer months, uh, but this is mostly due to our newly reconstructed wells, so I'm excited to, to hear that. I know that, uh, resident, uh, Stef Demilia just mentioned, you know, water, so we are on our way to doing that. I also did reach out to, to Easton a few months ago regarding their PFAS remediation, and, uh, I had some great conversations with them, and it's always in the front of my mind as, as we kind of move along and just consider our water quality, so, uh, I had some great, great slides from them, um, and they've done a great job over there, uh, which actually prompted me to, um, implore us to apply for that PFAS grant, so, um, hopefully more will be coming there. I also look forward to working with Council Strickles, uh, in being, uh, a very discerning, uh, voice for the Lake Shore, um, development. I live on the lake, so I am personally invested, but also, um, want to look at it from, um, I live on the lake, so I am personally invested, but also want to look at it from, you know, a total impact on our town in regard to infrastructure and environmental impact, of course. I want to thank Blythe Robinson for being an excellent Town Manager and keeping us on the path over the last year. And again, just thank you for everything. I know that I've learned a lot from you over the last few months. Everybody, I hope to see you out at the polls this weekend and at First Responder Day, and then, of course, the celebration at BSU. It's going to be a busy Saturday, so hopefully everybody will be out. And hopefully, I haven't checked the weather, but hopefully you've got good weather. And I just want to take a moment to everybody who's engaged in this special election process, no matter what side of the aisle you are, that you're on. The level involvement that we've seen is a sign that people care deeply about this town and its future. So I appreciate the engagement that we've seen over the last few months. As we move forward, I want to see that energy carried through and focused on solutions, no matter what the outcome is. Summers are usually quiet. As we kind of mentioned, we only have, you know, a meeting here and there in July and August. But we've got a lot of work to do as counselors, so hopefully everybody sticks around and stays focused on the solutions. We got a lot of work on our budget and infrastructure and schools. So I hope that we all stay focused and we'll move towards solutions. I'm confident that with this continued dialogue and shared sense of purpose, that we could all meet the challenges that we have in front of us. So that's all that I have in regard to comments, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. And all those in favor?
Aye.
And that we are done. Thank you very much, everyone.